A selectmen meeting for order, I'd ask you to have a stamp for the ledger. Okay, just say can only that Dan Carter is present, he's called in via Zoom. It's like we have Janice and I can't read the other names.
Uh, Jan, very well.
Okay. Uh. Do we have any public comments?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence, anything, Mary?
I have none.
Well, okay, I will accept a motion to consideration of approval of board selectmen regular minutes from August fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Uh, consideration of approval of public here.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, try this again, can you guys see me okay?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you, Dan, but I feel like we've lost the meeting itself.
Yeah. I think that's what happened, that's why I switched to the phone, thinking it was me. But it's good now.
Yeah, I just see the people that are on, yeah. So, and I went out and came back in and yeah, me neither. Do you want me to text Mary, I, let me text Mary and see. There, there.
Yeah, all right, we should be back. Dan, can you hear us?
I got you now.
All right, we approve the uh, public hearing minutes, I don't think you have a problem, right?
We're good.
Dan, do you have a per selectman reporter, you gonna table that till the next meeting?
Let, let's table that when the technology issues here.
Okay, so we'll table that. Uh, under old business, I'm gonna make a motion that we table consideration of charter revision questions for the November two thousand twenty-five municipal election ballot, can I get a second? All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor, aye? All right, I'm also gonna make a motion that we table the consideration of the Bethel High School roof solar project as we haven't uh, received contracts uh, from the solar provider.
Okay.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Uh, new business, um, the Bethel Tax Collector requested uh, authorization of refunds in the amount of seven thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. These refunds are a result of overpayments of taxes, so can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then motion passes. Um, next topic is we are going to consider assigning the school, the school roof projects, projects slash projects to the public site and building commission. So. This, you want me to make?
You wanna make?
Yeah, so I, I move that we um, assign the school roof projects to the public site and building commission.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, we, we do welcome.
Well, you can't, you can't, you can't discuss. So. Uh. All right, hearing the, I, I'm sure we'll provide a packet and discuss everything, you know, in terms of what, what, what we're talking about, and I'm sure we'll have some meetings with the school, so. All those in favor referring it?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, I don't know if we lost Dan again, but two votes were heard at. Okay, so you're good with it, Dan?
I'm good with it.
All right, motion passes, congratulations, guys. All right. We have received a letter um, from Timothy Bebel, who is the BRTC Sector Secretary, requesting that we uh, recommend um, Michael F. Francisi from Jacob Lane to be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission to fill the vacant seat previously held by David Pineberg, who uh, stepped down. So, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve uh, Michael Francis to uh, finish uh, David Pineberg's term on Parks and Rec.
Second.
Second, any discussion? I met with Timmy, he seemed like a really nice fellow and wants to get involved. So he's been taking care of his mother for the past three years, so he has some time now where he can uh, get involved, so. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any hearing uh, no opposed, uh, motion passes. Um. We are going to go past uh, the Kind Works mural, I don't believe they're here yet to discuss it with us, I believe they wanted to do a presentation, so with everyone's uh, approval, we'll pass this and pick up on it if uh, they make it to the meeting. All right. I don't need a motion on that, right, Melanie, we're just passing over it?
I mean, technically you table, right?
All right, so I'll make, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to table the Kind Works mural discussion.
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so we'll table that for now. Uh, consideration uh, and approval of a Bethel Cultural District District and Committee under the Economic Development Commission, so I will accept a motion for discussion.
So moved.
All right.
Second for discussion.
All right, all in favor of discussing, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, um, I see we have Janice on the line, Janice, are you here to discuss this with us?
I am, so the Economic Development Commission at their last meeting um, asked that the Board of Selectmen consider creating a cultural arts district, um, this would be through the Western Connecticut um, Alliance and the um, Connecticut Office of the Arts. Um, they um, had said that they would be willing to lead this effort and create a subcommittee under them to do this, the committee would have to um, consist of six to twelve uh, people, volunteers. Um, I would be on it, um, Nick Viti from the Economic Development Commission said he'd be on it, and then we would be reaching out to at least four other people, um, probably the Bethel Historical Society and possibly some of the businesses that do some sort of arts to create this district. Um, this district would uh, allow us to, to, possibly for funding, um, increase visibility for artists, performers, and cultural institutions, um, enhance opportunities for tourism, community engagement, and cultural program, and like I said, for grant funding and partnerships through the Connecticut Office of the Arts. There would be no financial commitment to this, it would just be um, creating this subcommittee, um, and then applying to the Office of Arts, which the Cultural Alliance of Western Connecticut would be a part of that application. So, they are basically requesting that you um, make them the um, the commission that would lead this effort and that they would have the authority to create a subcommittee um, to do this, the first thing that this group would do is take an inventory of our cultural assets. Um, there would be some sort of community engagement, once that's done, once that a community engagement takes place for feedback on those assets, then it would go back to the Board of Selectmen to, for a resolution. Um, and then after that point, that committee would work um, as much or as little as they want to continue the efforts of that cultural district.
Okay. So, are we just approving a committee tonight?
Hi, this is, I'm just about to say we're not familiar with what this is about, Brian, this is the first time seeing it, I see the letter, um, but I just don't really know what's involved, so I'm not positioned to give an opinion on it or the other at this point. Um, so I would be happy to meet with Janice to find out what, a little bit more about this, what this is about, and specifically what the charge of the committee would be, which is not writing here, but at this point, I'm, I just don't really have enough information to um, express an opinion.
Okay.
I, I have a couple of questions, myself, actually.
Oh, go ahead, answer.
Okay, yeah, just waiting to recognize since you're chairing, um, so, so first off, I, I started looking at this, and there were a couple of questions, number one, uh, with respect to this kind of committee, it, does it have any kind of um, standing in state law? Like, if we make a committee, is there anything in state law that says what kind of power they have, or have we looked at that? Just to make sure, cause like, in some commissions and committees, if you create one, then they actually have some standing under state law and some powers that I'd wanna make sure we understood before we create the committee.
Yeah, I don't think that's the case at all. Basically, you're doing an application to the state to have a cultural district, and that will basically provide you opportunities for funding, but there's no um, it doesn't hold any, it's really a local effort, it doesn't hold any uh, any state responsibilities or um, have any jurisdiction with the state.
Okay, and with respect to the application procedure, like, they would, they would put it together, and then the Board of Selectmen would do a resolution to actually apply and approve the application?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the other thing that I'm gonna have Melanie take a look at, because any, anytime we form a committee, we do have to do minority representation rules according to the state statute. I just wanna check to see if this actually has to happen here as well. So it might be something you have to consider in creating a committee. Um, because it does specifically say that in state statute committees, even though we don't have anything about committees in our charter.
Um, yeah, so the, I believe under the charter, the Economic Development Commission does have the authority to have subcommittees, and so this would be, the recommendation would be a subcommittee on the Development Commission. The other option would be that we create an entirely new commission, um, or assign an existing board, but if you assign it existing board, they have to have some representation through the state, which would include um, uh, representation from local arts councils or cultural organizations, historical society, artists, artist collective, creative businesses, and local business or chamber of commerce. And since the Economic Development Commission, part of their strategic plan is around arts, um, we thought this would probably be the simplest and easiest way to, to make this happen.
No, I understand that, I think you brought up a good point. If we do it as a subcommittee to hear, then we may not have some of the state requirements that you were just talking about, is that what those were?
No, we would pull in, so in terms of the Economic Development Commission, it wouldn't just be members of the Economic Development Commission on it, we would have to pull in other representatives outside of the commission itself for this committee, yeah.
So we basically have to give them like some sort of appointing authority, appoint the committee, and then I think we're supposed to talk to Melanie again, just to make sure whether or not minority representation applies. So I think, I think it does, I mean, this came across recently in statute that it's hard to get away from it. Uh, cause we did that with the America Two Fifty Committee, like, we had to do minority representation under the state law.
Um, yeah, and I would, yeah, and the only differentiation I think here is that it's under the Economic Development Commission, so um, I just wanna make that point to Melanie when she, when she reviews it.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there are other, there are other options, there are other options, but um, this seems to be the least resistance to get this done. Cause we already have people in place and we're already kind of looking at that, so.
Okay. Um, I'm good with it, and then you, my understanding is you're gonna come back to us with an application and a resolution to how this is gonna work.
Yeah, so once the committee is formed, then we would get the committee together, we would define the area, um, and then we would um, do an asset mapping, um, and that asset mapping would go to a community forum for people to take a look at it. Once that, we go through that process, then we would come back to the Board of Selectmen with the application, um, and asking for a resolution to accept the district.
Okay. I'll leave it to uh, the others for questions.
So basically, tonight, all you really need us to do is approve the committee. Saying that you could form a committee, because we're not, because it says approval of Bethel Cultural District, but we're really not approving that, because we don't know where it is.
No, you're just giving the Economic Development Commission the authority to lead the effort and to create a subcommittee um, to to lead this effort of creating this cultural district.
Okay, and then any other, anything that would require like, decision stuff, would come back to the Board's, Board of uh, Select?
Yeah, cause the commission, yeah, the subcommittee would make recommendations to the EDC, the EDC would then make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen.
Do you have any questions?
Um. Is, uh, Janice, is this time sensitive?
It's not time sensitive, I know the state is really focused on kind of getting these things moving, but um, no, I wouldn't say it's time sensitive, and if you had to wait until the next meeting, that would be fine.
All right, then, I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this to our next meeting, you know, to give uh, the town attorney time to uh, look into it and, you know, let us know exactly what we have to do.
I'll meet with Janice.
Yeah, you can meet with Janice, and that'd be great.
Second.
Second, okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll table this until our next meeting, uh, and that way, Janice, Melanie can talk to you, and as usual, we appreciate everything you do for the time of Bethel.
Of course. And I just wanted to say that I'm also familiar with what Kind Works wants to do, and I know they had a teacher appreciation night tonight, so he was gonna try to scoot over, but if he doesn't get back by the time you go through these other two agenda items, I'd be happy to give you an overview of it, and then at least you have some framework for the next time.
Okay, that sounds good. Um. Next on the list is consideration of sponsoring a substance use prevention presentation at Bethel High School using opioid settlement funds, so can I have a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Right, so, uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, so do we have?
So, Mr. Chair, I can, yeah, I'll, I'll lead this one. Um, as you gentlemen know, uh, over, over the years, we've been getting uh, settlement money from the large pharmaceutical companies with respect to opioids. And there are certain requirements that we're supposed to use those for, you know, basically opioid use prevention. Um, so a lot of that's education, um, you, we can't use it for the, the police department in enforcement, but anything kind of education related, we can. Uh, what, what happened is, we just got a recent bolus of some money, we probably have about sixty thousand dollars, like, all in, I don't know if we've gotten our last check, but it's important that we use some of this for some programming, and with uh, the International Overdose Awareness Day coming up at the end of the month, you know, we kind of began some conversations about what maybe we should be doing. And one of the things that I wanted to put on your radar, because it's a substantial, you know, payment, is that um, the Heron Project came over to the high school a number of years ago, uh, Mr. Heron is a world renowned speaker. Um, I had asked schools, you know, what may, maybe they would be interested in, and right away, um, Principal Toretta jumped in and was like, hey, we really love to bring him back, and bring him back the week of prom. So that would be, right now, we're looking, I think, at April twenty-second. It's a, it's a fifteen thousand dollar fee, um, like with the travel and incoming, so, you know, we're looking fifteen or twenty thousand dollars for the uh, for the program. Um, last time, it was pretty substantial, and, you know, they, the, they felt there was a real impact among the students, in fact, part of this program is that, you know, they actually worked with students who had issues uh, and family issues with, related to opioids, so it's a, it's a very wise investment, it's a big thing for the school. Uh, they'll do two programs, they'll do one during the day, like in an assembly format, they'll do one in the evening where uh, parents and also schoolers can come, so it's, it's a really good day. Uh, but that's, that's kind of the overview, um, I'm wholeheartedly in support of it, I think it's wise use of the funds, but I wanted to bring that to you guys for any questions or thoughts.
Do we have to approve an amount, you know, how much it's gonna cost to sponsor the event?
Not, not, actually, we, we don't, I mean, what's interesting is, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure we, I could have just done this, but, you know, I, I think we're, I think we approve the event as we get closer, um, I'll talk about the budget. Um, I think I just wanna approve doing it, if, if that's okay, cause I think there'll be, you know, some other budget items down the line, I mean, we could just say, if you wanna start with a budget, it would make you feel comfortable, let's say twenty thousand dollars, if, if there's, you know, other things we have to bring into this to help them. But that money is really used, um, you know, for all kinds of different things that we can do, and I don't think it's something we bring necessarily to the board every time we do a vote, or, or do something with it, right, there's lots of opportunities, but this is a big thing, and I, I wanted to make sure we were all on board.
All right, well, I'm uh, ask for a motion to uh, sponsor a substance use prevention presentation at Bethel High School using opioid settlement funds.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Yeah, I don't think we'll put a dollar amount on at this meeting, if, you know, I'm sure you'll give us updates how it goes as it goes along. So if everyone's okay?
Yeah.
Everyone's okay with that, uh, I'll try your minds, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Obviously, none opposed and no abstentions, the motion carries. All right, so, um, I know we have an executive session. Uh, do we wanna go into executive session, or do we wanna give Janice the opportunity to talk about the Kind Works mural? What, what, what would be? Yeah, so Janice, we'll let you talk to us, thank you, guys. We'll let, we'll let uh, you talk about the Kind Works mural.
Sure, and Cody's actually in transit right now, so he should be there any minute or two, so I don't know if you guys wanna go in an executive session, and then he should be there by the time you get out.
He's coming to the meeting?
Yeah, he's physically on his way there, yeah.
All right.
Okay, that's fine.
So, so what I will do is, I will entertain a motion to go out of regular session and go into executive session, and we will also invite the town attorney, Melanie O'Brien, and we'll invite Mary Churchill into that executive session. And this is to discuss uh, weak matters.
Second.
So I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, I'll try your minds, all in favor of going into executive session, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, so, thank you for those attendees who came on to the meeting tonight, uh, we're gonna head into executive session. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everyone back to our uh, Board of uh, Selectmen meeting, seven forty-four PM, we are back in regular session.
Hello.
Hello.
So, uh.
I sit here?
I can.
So we'll uh.
Any, any more of the hot seats?
We will go back to our table item, consideration, uh, and or approval of Kind Works mural on and outside of the municipal building center, uh, if you'd be willing to introduce yourself, everybody?
Sure, uh, my name is Cody, I represent Kind Works, a nonprofit in Bethel, and uh, I'm really working, uh, outreach with education with uh, schools, but we also do a lot of creative stuff with what we call community art, and that's where the mural concept comes.
Okay. And you wanna discuss mural with us? I was hoping to ask some stuff you wanna talk to us about?
Yeah, you guys tell me, I'll send particular questions, or if I should just share anything?
I mean, like, like, where are you proposing to put the mural, mural, what does it consist of?
How big?
Yeah, how big, you know, just, put this, you know, give us a brief synopsis of what you're planning on doing.
All right, so the, the plan right now is to create, which Russ would be a, a, a pretty big scale mural, most of the murals are like, uh, roughly like eight by eight, and then about seventy, for like the last ten years, primarily in schools, few businesses, and this one, I can check in a minute, the actual scale to it, but it's, it's substantially bigger. And we had two locations that we thought would work best, that was facing the building on either corner, and the idea that we had was proposed to the town to determine if we get through to that point. Um, both which location, unless it's logistics, and you guys guide that, and then also a design concept, we have two design concepts we're kind of working with, which did propose, but the the process in which we uh, make murals is, is kind of unique, and then our, every step involves community engagement, so we're not like hiring necessarily artists, they come out and they do everything from start to finish. We're group this one with a really unique technique, and we teach people that process along the way, so there's three phases, first phase would be tile making, where the training would be included, they actually make the tiles, that would physically make up um, the mural. Uh, the second one is a, is a painting workshop, where tiles were painted, and that's probably the easiest part. And then the third part is the physical installation, where we invite volunteers to be part of actually installing the mural upon the wall. If no one showed up at any part of this, we have the ability to do it ourselves, we have a team of like eight to ten volunteers to do this forever. Um, but the idea really is to engage the community and make this something that went stuff on the wall, not hopefully this, it not only represents the community, but um, it, it reflects people's, you know, efforts and the legacy project will hopefully represent people for a long time. So that's a quick overview of the process in which we do.
So, how big are you proposing?
Yeah. I think the model we came up with was six by eighteen.
Six feet high by eighteen?
And with, yeah. Um, but a lot of that's also gonna play into like the actual design, this, this is, this is kind of unique for us, normally what you do is that the school will reach out to us, they would tell us what they want, they kind of pay for it, and we, and we we embark on this kind of journey with them with the process, but this is a lot more unique for us, we're actually trying to do something that we think would be the whole community proud of, that we benefit, people will see our work. And the idea that there's this matching sort of grant tied into it can allow us to be really creative, trying to make something really massive, there's, there's a project in uh, Tucson, where, where Ben's Bells, which we were formerly known as, um, they created this, this huge mural, and it's almost like part of like, not just marketing, but like, like tourism, it's just something that people come by and they see, and I think the whole community is proud of it, and, and our thought was, if we can do that here, it'd be great. And we're in Bethel, it's our own town, and that's kind of the idea behind the, the scale, but to your, is your question, that's that's the project that we're looking at, that scale, it might adjust slightly based on either some structural stuff or design stuff, but we're trying to work within as much as possible. we're trying to work with it as much as possible.
Cody, is this the I am Tucson?
Yes. And I'm starting a little blind to what you guys are or not looking at, but whatever.
So.
If you guys saw that, it gives you, it's not really clear, you know, what that might look like.
I visit Tucson after a little bit, and I go, where are they located?
It's, um, it's, it's near, I think it's, it's, uh, I want to say it's off, it's kind of Ministry's Broadway, I think it's off Broadway. You, you can look it up, it's, it's landmark.
Okay.
So, so you're proposing over by, I'm assuming that's close to the border of Ed, Entrance Melanie, which you're pretty familiar with? That border of Ed?
It's the back part.
It looks to be the back, yes.
Where you go into the gym.
And the, is the other one, you're thinking about the ramp on that wall where the ramp is?
The ramp is a definite, and just, just to be clearly, we want this to be what the community wants. You know, there's some thoughts like, hey, that's the spot it needs to be. When we came out, we looked, I think the reason we want, if I'm pointing to myself, that's the front of the building. We like this front more because I think that's the back, just to the amount of cars that would be driving by every day and just seeing that messaging for us seem to be the most impactful. But I've also explained to me that a lot of folks use, that's the back, correct?
This is the back, this one, this one's.
There, there's a lot of programs that run here, people see those, but just like, I know there's, there's one school in, um, in Reading, uh, uh, Reed. You can't not drive by and see it. It's not even your direct sight of view. It's like right off the side, and you almost get this really neat effect where the sun kind of hits the mirrors and it just kind of pops up and that's kind of thought in town. We want everyone even close to the area to actually sort of see it. But it, it's got to be something that town wants. So if, if the back area was more impactful or more meaningful, it's not, we're not defining that. We do want the back, but that's, when the artist went out, I was just trying to picture, I think the one they thought, um, would work best was the ones that left the walkway and then always far to the right.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's not the most professional way of doing it, but like that walkway. You got it, recognize where I will. That was from our standpoint, but again, it's a community project, so like, there's a lot of feedback, I think, from this committee or from the town that, that might determine that. Outside of it being a structural issue based on, I don't know, reasonable convenience.
Was be, could it be higher because cars park there?
The only issue with height is if you get to a certain threshold, now we're talking about bringing like some like the bucket trucks, and it's just, it's, it's a whole different project from like liability standpoint, like equipment we need. So it's not a, no, we've done them a lot, but simplest way to do it where we basically know, we just kind of bring our ladders. Not to go too high, but if you have like a particular vision, I mean, I could try to get back with it.
No, I was just thinking, I, I know cars, you were talking about cars passing by and visually seeing it, but if you've got cars parked in front of it, you don't see it.
The, the thought would be to have it elevated enough that you have clear.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you get it up five feet off the ground or something like that, you know, you're not putting it up by near the roof.
The, the, the dimensions with the biggest scale are probably going to be width, so I don't think the vertical challenge will be that bad. Meaning that we start, you know, say two feet off the ground and we end up going like eight or nine by the time we're done, which should be plenty of, I think, visual accessibility.
Um, and what type of upkeep is required with these?
We haven't had an issue. We've, we've done like over seventy in the last ten years. The only issues I can think of in the murals we did, we had one mural where there was a issue with the, um, the concrete materials not adhering correctly, and we, we basically did a mistake, weren't quite aware of the, the temperature. The building was too hot. We did a project in the summer and we just did not do the job we learned from, and we recognized that right away, stopped the process, and then we wait, it cooled down and it reapplied, it's fine. And there's one school in Stratford where we don't know exactly what happened. This was done prior, it's actually when I was with the organization. They had done a lot of work on their roof and the wall behind, and somehow water had come down, and that created some issues. Outside of that, nothing's ever come back to us that is an issue. Now imagine like, you know, new town loan, because they needed a decent amount of which are outdoors.
Mister Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, um, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, the two spots. One is the ramp out front, one is the side of the building over by the, uh, entrance to the gym. The, the one out front, you, you, you're basically proposing putting something on that wall, correct? Yes, right there, okay. And it's not going to be like just what that other one looks like. I mean, you're going to have some sort of, um, I guess, designed feature, or is it just literally like what you're showing there, like Be Kind Bethel?
Yeah, and I, I, I guess I, I might have missed sharing. We have two updated revisions, I don't think, looking back, that have been shared yet, uh, that have, um, there's probably anything I can do, maybe email them in the morning, see if you can share them out. And we don't have like great graphic art software, so we're really kind of just using like, so the art can't but to create that, but we have two visual, um, proposals for, for concepts for what it would look like, and that's what we're going to offer. And the only thing that's, that's different than what this image shows is that it's the ramp or the far side that I believe someone said that's the front entrance door.
It goes to tax, tax collector and, uh, town clerk. That's that.
It's decided that.
It's right there. That's right there.
This one's the town clerk. But the other one, the Bethel vertical, that was like by the G P, not my.
This one over there?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Here I can.
So he's thinking of two.
Is we either, either location.
The back or this?
We were proposing not the back, but if you guys said the back is more, this has to be impactful. Like if this is something that's going to make a difference to the community, we want it to be where it's the most visible. So this is where coming out just saying, hey, we envision cars going by, this is where we see the most foot traffic or most impact. It could be the back, so that's not really, that's a community decision, what else? Outside structural stuff. So, but we have our suggestions, but we're going to kind of follow your lead. But the only thing you don't have, and I would feel bad, is you still don't have the updated like logo concept, like the college design we thought. And I could send a quick email.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, in the back.
Yeah, in the back.
To, to the, to the left of the sign there is the ramp, going to the back gym.
Yeah, I think that's, and you, you see that off of, uh, Worcester Street?
Is there any objection to doing the, uh, is there any objection to doing the front? Because that's kind of offset from the rest of the building stuck, stuck back.
I mean, I, I, I would prefer the back where the gym is myself.
Okay.
Because you have, you have a lot of kids there, you'll have Worcester Street traffic, you know, everyone parks there to go to the basketball games and things like that, and it's kind of on the same side as the border.
Dan, you have any objections to the front of the gymnasium? I don't, I don't know. I know there's some trees there, but I don't know if there's any room to the be to the.
So they, so the, um, the, I, I don't, the, the only two places I saw is over by the town clerk's office at the ramp. And then that back part, which is where the other ramp goes in into that courtyard looking area, I don't have any objections to either one. In fact, if depending on what their thought was, as long as it's not just that big square being a kind Bethel, if it were a nice mosaic like they've done in other places, the front would look really nice there because, you know, eventually we're going to have a parking lot of that on that end, we think. The town, that town front is used for all kinds of different events, and it kind of, that area is set back from the rest of the building. So it'd be, it'd be a cool feature, but again, I'm pretty open to either one. Oh, I, see, I didn't see that one.
Right, they just put it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, I, I think I might have missed, uh, an email.
Yeah.
No information, so sorry about that.
It, so that's, um.
That's higher than nine feet.
Oh, yeah.
Higher than six feet, that's.
Yeah, we have limitations. They're probably bigger and not more truncated, not quite as high vertically, but vertical and horizontal.
I mean, Dan, I, I, I like the idea over by the gym because of all the kids that come and play basketball. You'll have Worcester, you know, you have a lot of traffic on Worcester Street, right? That'll.
Is there a second design? I bet you said there were two options.
There, there should be, yeah. And yeah, we're just trying to get like, at one point, he was actually, there was some agreement, what it would look like to offer the town, down the community to vote which one they want. And we have other designs that we, that are more templated for us, but this is, we're trying to come up something that's uniquely Bethel oriented, and that, the Tucson one literally sets it up, and that's, that's what, I think is kind of what we're talking about.
So I, I, I'll be honest, I, I, it, the only two spots I particularly like is over by the town clerk ramp or behind the, on the end of the building, which is where the other ramp is coming in from Worcester. I, I'm not particularly fond of putting it right in the middle of the front. You know, the, the Bethel Town Hall has a really beautiful look to it. I just think we need to like put that in the right spot personally, um, but I'm open to suggestions and, and select mentors and, and straighten, brought a great point about doing it where all the kids come in and out and all that, that is a great spot. Yeah, I, I just would want to see a design. I, I wouldn't go for just Bethel. I, I'm not sure what, yeah.
Maybe like the tree or something like that, that you do.
That's always out, but you know, like we have template stuff, this is just.
The tree, the tree made it look nice.
This is the message, and we could do our, our standard, like Be Kind Flower, and make it more Bethel colors associated with school and something.
Well, if, if we, if, if we all agreed and said, look, we'd like it, you know, on that side where the kids come in for basketball. Maybe then you, the backside of the building, and maybe you can show us, you know, you can email, you know, I don't want, I don't want to make you come back to another meeting, but you can email, uh, you know, Mary some options and she could, you know, we could talk about it at a Board of Selectment meeting and say, oh, yeah, like, we like that tree, looks really nice. We think that would be cool over there.
Trees, the flower.
And, and the tree might be a good idea because then you got it coming up and then you're, you're higher above the cars, so, yeah.
The only thing we, we wanted, but maybe it's not as important, we, we wanted to, to brand and stamp, uh, Bethel's part of it. I think we're, some associates here have been doing these murals, like the tree, but most folks realize those, those are ours or even like the flower, but that is part of, we wanted to do something that felt like.
Space out the back and then come up on the sign.
But what I can do is it's easy enough to share with not, I mean, we've got pictures of all this stuff, even some of these stuff recently, and now some schools have had, uh, like the hall logos for their mascot, um, just to give some different ideas, but we're open to anything early on.
And, and Cody, I just want to double check, so basically, you, you would raise six thousand and the town is supposed to match six thousand?
Yeah, that's what I was saying as well. It's our first time going through this process, and there's a few stipulations as well. And what I kind of like from the standpoint of the, the, the theme behind it, it has to be like multiple small, uh, donations. So that is, and I forget exactly what it is, but like I'm going to say, like number of like forty or fifty people have to donate, so it's not like one or two, like, like big funders, like it clearly has to represent something the community wants to do. But we are supposed to take the lead on that. So additions doing some like, you know, electronic sharing just for folks that want to donate. Uh, we also need some fundraisers and, and designate this project as the recipient of those funds.
All right, well, any other discussion? So I'd like to move that, uh, we ask them to proceed with designing a mural that will go on the backside of the location closer to where the kids come in and play basketball and.
And that's the picture earlier, correct? Just like you said.
It's not the one here, it's the one where all the windows are going up. You'll see, I mean, it's like right over there. It's like kind of, kind of, guys kind of over.
This one here.
Oh, that, that's the exact, that's the image that's included with our.
Right, and maybe come up with something that you think everyone will like.
What I'll send is, I'm going to send, uh, the ones we've done that are on our website, and then a few other examples, just, just for ideas, and you guys can bounce something back to us. And then, uh, case will go from there. Any other questions as far as like, like the process or if it's this matter of just picking, sounds like location, but kind of, now it's just design concept.
Well, let's talk about the budget. And this is a fundraiser that the town has to work on, or?
We're actually, we're, we're responsible for it, so the way it works, you know, this is unique to me as well, because I haven't gone through this process, but we are responsible for fundraising efforts. If we raise six thousand dollars, then the, uh, Connecticut Sustainability Foundation Organization then matches that. Um, but if we do not raise those funds and we fall short, then it's, it's, it's kind of on us.
So what's the most the town's on the hook for?
This is why it's very deep for us.
No, I understand that. I thought I read something, I thought I read something where it said not exceed fifteen thousand.
Uh, that's, that's the language of the Connecticut Sustainability, National Foundation Organization. That's the cap they put in for their grant.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why it's so unique for us. We never actually pitched or proposed anyone other than folks that wants to come and actually build something, so, but we, you know, it's our community who want to take it.
Okay, can I, can I get a second on the motion?
Okay, now we can discuss it.
Now we, we, well, we already got through the first, we talked about the money, we got the location now, now we just need to.
Your, your schedule is a pretty, uh, you know, he's looking for late fall or early winter of, of this year?
Great question. So because it's an outdoor mural, the way we're envisioning is based on when this starts. This process started like back in like April, we thought relatively quick, and we just keep learning some more steps. Is we would do the fundraising, uh, up into maybe through the winter and some of the initial steps like, uh, the clay, tile making, you need, like, say we do that like in November, and then the painting is February. The installation cannot be done until the weather permits, which usually starts in April. Yeah, which is, it creates for a great storyboard also, though, because now it's a year-long campaign to build some momentum behind this, like, it's not a overnight process.
And, and before we get started, do you have someone come out and look at that existing brick wall to make sure it's going to?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll come back out, however your, your point person is, we'll walk through as well, but like, we've just done this process so many times, like there has to be some significant structural integrities or things that we probably all move around, like, I don't know, like a fuse box has to stay in there, or lighting that not to move, but it's as long as the integrity of the building is, is sound, that's all we need. Usually, especially just with buildings like this, that's, there's inspection process, I hadn't had much time. Anything we see will share. It might be like, hey, you have a gutter that's running water down, please assure.
Well, we just did so, we just did some lighter, uh, pointing up on it there.
We might suggest, hey, you guys can put some lighting at night, it actually pointed up, but that's bonus and all options.
The motion was to, uh, grant approval to put it on the backside of the building pending approval of the designs which will, uh, sundown, right?
And, and the thought we had, can maybe help us land this together, was we were thinking about trying to go with the concept where maybe the town could possibly vote on which design. So if we're kind of working something, or that might be too complicated, uh, I'm going to need some help with that, but I'll, I'll share as many images as I can. You guys can think, and we might build that, like, match of stuff. It might be, um, our tree mural with Bethel right next to it. Um, so feel free to have some creativity with that as well. Don't go crazy with like small little deals, and maybe that's a little hard to do for takes, but.
Can you do a Sasquatch for me? All right, so we, we got to vote on it before we go any further. Dan, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries, congratulations, and we look forward to getting some of your designs and working.
It's a awesome project, worth it.
All right, any, uh, other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
Dan, you want to second it?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjuring the meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, I was late, by the way. I did my best.